No, you only walk.
Look at that.
Well, give them to him. I got you two things.
Oh, thank you.
Only she didn't go me.
Oh, thank you.
And should I say this for anything?
What is that?
It's a package.
Whoever becomes the most offensive.
The corner.
I'm having a jelly. That might be the word I might use.
Go ahead.
I just want to tell you that we're out with the ground and holding. Caution, nothing 250,000. And that's without. Dry Creek came in, I have 190,000. After yesterday, we were 195,000 on the Orse River. We had the bridge washed out over the coast of Georgia. And it's one of those cattle equities up there. Finally yesterday, we were able to get in there to start getting water. We have the angle up there in the creek so we don't throw it. It's finding out from the creek. We have a lot of concrete to do with it. But they washed it behind the back wall and got it in. And again, we have no any trash code. 3200 dollars for climbing the gates. As a plan, then we're up to bring it over hopefully next week. Starting to show a little more comments. If you guys have questions.
Yeah, Mr. Board brought up something. We're talking about that green road. There's a way. But when you do these. Like say, you ever keep track of what mile marker or whatever on the front? I know there's not markers, but mile seven through 13. You ever keep track of that on the year? That's where you're going to be fixing. I don't know, we were thinking about how we fix an area, how long the lifespan is. Of that area. It'd be interesting to see if there's certain spots you're going back to. I don't know. Just food for thought on some of those county road projects. I'm fixing mile three through eight or something. If you don't mind.
The biggest thing on that request was it just said portions, which we know is probably like the worst portions. We're not going to be fixing. I think it's 13 miles total?
No, no. What I find on is 30 miles.
Right, but the whole. Green road is the whole.
Well, it's 10 miles, 10 and a half to the bin station.
Okay. So just, I'm assuming the problem areas and things will probably get seen.
There's a mile of mustard to be used. I was going to work on that. The gravel out and then there's a piece of shared sweets I was going to work on. And then there's some down there by Dixon's that needs gravel. But I don't think that needs any shoulder work. That means looking around. I might just, you know, lie there because we have to talk. But I think we'll be back at that. And there's short three spots down below the bin station. And I asked for the 15,000. I think that would cover more than three miles. But I don't have any more shoulder work up on light out there. I don't want, I don't want.
Even just a couple of quick throw downs north of Shane's and a couple of things that way. All we have the bank off of is a portion of these. And that's the only.
Right, you know, I think when we tap left, if we can, hey, we get complacency. Can fix out of our.
Redview Road. There's some questions over the cattle guard people up there.
And we've got a copy off our parcel meter. And it looks to me like it missed effects, did landowners. And that was both up there at the same time.
Still, I'm not going to try to clear out what all the more I think. Somebody wants to talk to you.
Yeah, I told last night, just verifying. There's evidently an old one up there that's deep down pretty bad.
It's there.
Okay. Right, it's kind of buried in. But that isn't going to be the location of the new one. Okay, it's going to be like closer to like where the new fencing and all. Okay, gotcha. That's what the concern was on the call, just to make sure that the wording on those comes in as installment and relocation. So it covers both really, but this would actually be the install in a new location. Yeah, okay. That's just what the question was.
So Jimmy, on this map that you put, it's this little vertical line right here? I'm guessing, yeah, that's from one of the landowners. Except for these those two? Yes, that's my understanding. And that's why it shows on the map. Let me see, is your map my map? We got those maps. Oh, look at she's got the fancy map. Because the description I had learned is that that county road is on the section line. And this one doesn't show that either. Did you talk to Tisdale's and Rick's?
Yes, well, there's some of them at the same time.
That was just a concern. You know, you've got the communication that you knew that's a lot of numbers. The call that I received was just probably verifying what you already know and the location of that. But Sam was on the agenda for today. We just wanted to. The correct type of place and then correct locations.
Yes, I wanted to close you guys too. I was seeing that project coming along. I guess I'd like some direction when we want to be there.
So, so Board, I guess what you found out from the director?
I was seeing that coordinator said we were fine to continue the project. And get kind of recommended forward. Research and all those. I guess the question would be, you know, how do we want to make the match? Are we comfortable with kind of the fund on the match? I guess speak with a gentleman on the county road fund committee. And he says, if you have easements and you have a survey, he said, sounds to me like you're back in the road. And some of the records I've looked through, they have a short one easement. Ted, you were probably on board on that one all the way along. I don't know if that one easement was ever obtained. If you have all your easements, you can ask for this card. Do you have that information? Yes. I'm not, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure on one easement. Yeah, I'm not either. I think Carol is going to take that. And, Mr. Chairman, and if we can get that, I don't have a problem with the resolution out there. Whatsoever.
Yeah, I mean, there's a survey in here in the books. So why don't we just do a resolution off the survey and call it?
I have not had time to keep looking. I started looking and then I went on vacation and I just haven't had time to look for the minutes. I started and I found a lot of view that already filmed. And I'm sure that there's something in order for that survey to have been done and that plot map to have been done. It's just that missing piece that we're missing because there's another resolution doing another road at that time, exact same time. I don't know if it's just that missing piece. But I think it, that resolution is just what's needed.
In my heart of hearts, I want the. And whether we take it by saying we're taking it, it's been used for 10 years, then whatever that takes. But I'd rather have the easement in our records to have it. Whichever one it is.
Oh, my out of that is if they absolutely disagree.
Then we take it.
But they pay taxes on it?
That's the question you should ask.
Because if they're not, they've already given up the easement. It's just a matter of finding when they did. Because if they're already not paying taxes on that section, they've already given the county the easement. It's just a matter of finding where that is.
I will gently push back though. There was a landowner here that was paying taxes on the highway for 20 some years. It just never was taken off the rolls. And I know that the prior assessor went through the effort of going quite too detailed to take certain portions off. But I have, there's more comment there, but. So that does, that does happen. There are blanks in the system.
Because in the minutes, it says that they were working with that other landowner. And then right after that, that survey was done and the plot map was done.
Well, sometimes you don't have a choice on the survey. The survey is done, you know.
Nothing's the landlord even alive at this point. They're working with. Personally, I would like pursue rather going through resolution. I mean. It's ridiculous to me that there's 100 people that knocked that road. And if that's at the beginning or in the middle or wherever it is, that we've been maintaining it. There's people that live out there that expect us to continue to maintain it. And are we kicking the can down the road where we're not going to be able to even do the May cord if we get too far into the fall?
Mr. Chairman, we can, we can do the road. There's no issue with the road. There's not an issue with the May cord. There's not, it's hell for people.
I know, and that's what I'm saying. We did a resolution, which one gentleman I spoke with, which is on that forward, the CMAC forward, said this happens all the time. He said, you should probably just do it. And he said that if I was you, I would just do it by resolution and be done with it. I'm kind of tired of worrying about stepping on somebody's toes that was throwing a fit about an easement 20 years ago.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a, and I think we're arguing on the same thing here. I don't think we're. But when we go through the county road fund, construction and maintenance fund, we'll show you portions of that.
Would that be sort of an accurate portrayal of, you know, Weston County, 1903, where the, where the sun set on the Old West?
Oh, for sure. I mean, yeah, yeah. You definitely had the changing of the guard and times are changing. Your cowboys and Indian battle. I mean, the Lightning Creek was essentially the last one. And then vigilante business has been going on, still goes on now. But just something like Slim's ordeal was, it's pretty Old West there. That's.
Well, right on, you know, right on Main Street and the trestle.
Yeah, that's 1800 stuff.
But that was, you know, that movie scene of a mob showing up and taking someone away from the sheriff. There wouldn't a heck of a lot more of that happened after 1903, I don't think.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So it was the end of, end of an era, I think. And it's, you know, it's, times are changing.
Where you have to show that you have permission to work on that road. And when we went several years ago and had the Upton Fairview and there was only one, we could not even go for any type of funding because there was one missing. And there were, you had 77 people or something living on that at that time. And it was, it was frustrating. It was, but that, those are the rules. We could spend our own money. And when I say own, it's not the money that has stipulations on it. It's money that falls under the Wyoming State Constitution. So I have no problem. I think we're on the same page here. It's just I want to follow the rules. I never want to have that money taken away from us.
If we do it by resolution, though, we're following the rules.
I have not argued with you on that. I would like to have the, I would like to have the easement.
I understand that.
And so if it takes the county attorney to say this piece, blah, 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 because we have taken care of it for 10 years, is now ours, then that's what I would like.
It's irritating to me if this juncture is. This discussion's been going on for a month and nobody to date still knows who the missing easement is.
But I have a difference if I, you know, looking through those road looks, that is parts of two different old roads. You know, parts of those roads were abandoned, but they weren't abandoned completely. I don't know, I can't find any where, you know, the road name was changed. You know, how did they get a road number? Well, they assigned road numbers a lot. You know, when they, people came in and asked for roads and. But, you know, I don't know where, where it went for the two roads that used or exist. And I do, well, I know a part of that was taken down. So it was a part of it that this other. You can do this. Or do the looks. So, Mr. Chairman, let's go through the establishment procedures and get her done. Which means you have a public hearing, the whole thing? Get her done.
This juncture, I'm okay with it. I mean, it's 20 years now that that thing's been considered or thought of as a county road and maintained. Certain.
It's hard for us to hear down here.
We do this by resolution, by doctrine or?
If you have all the.
Without that one easement, even with a resolution, we can't. That's how, he said we could. So what happens when you got one landowner that refuses to do any? That's who I think it is. We may still not do an easement.
And I, you remember Ted?
No, I remember two portions. That was kind of way back when Dale Barton subdivided that. I was amazed at what those people at that time were trying to drive a school bus through. And now did Dale do it correctly? He sold the land into lots. He should have paid for a road going in there, is my thought. And it was the worst goat trail in the world, two-track trail going in there. The school bus was going down, around trees, over embankments. I had, took a pickup in there, chained up. I didn't know whether I could get in and out of there. But eventually, the commissioners agreed to be a county road up to a point to where it went straight ahead to the bird farm, what they called the bird farm at that time. That was not a county road. And anything north, which was a haul road going into Creek County, was not a county road. So between, I could drive up there and show you approximately where the end of the county road was. There was another landowner that I had a problem with when I was trying to get all the paperwork, was that he actually moved the survey stakes to show that he owned the land, which was definitely against the law. When I pointed it out to him, he called that a mistake, but I don't know the stakes were ever moved back. He moved the survey stakes on one corner at least 100 feet off into somebody else's property. And I could point out what residence that was, who lives there now, I have no idea. But it was kind of a mess to begin with. It got better when the road got constructed. And all I'm familiar is where it ended at that time. And, but it did not continue on to what they called the bird farm. Or the haul road. So I don't know where you're lacking the easement.
I'm going to go knock on their door. If that's what you, if that would have used this everything. But I would need the right piece of paper to carry up to the front door.
We should, they're out here. They're out there. We should have coverage of that paper.
I think we might know who the landowner is. But I just need the right piece of paper to take to the front door and say, here's the problem here. We need to solve this problem. And if they don't do that, then I think we go by a public hearing. And hopefully it doesn't screw things up. I'm going to see next up. If we, if I can get to resolution next week and at the next meeting, we can. If I can get an easement potentially, in the next meeting, maybe we can have a resolution ready. If we're pushing forward.
But you're going to have to have a public hearing.
Even just with the resolution and all the easements?
Yes.
Well, I'm looking at the statute. It says the commissioners may start the procedure, but I think you still have to go through the whole procedure. I have that guide. Maybe you know it to me instead of me a few years ago.
Some of the dash might pick up.
It's probably safer to start a public hearing.
So I'm confused here again. We go through public petition and you have to do the viewer appointed. Viewer report. Through board motion, go through resolution. Survey and plot file, which is done. Do you have to go through condemnation, landowner comment, or prescriptive rights? Is that right? My first shift's donated, beat spot. I'm not figuring you need a hearing for landowner consent. Michael, can you create something that you can email named it or an easement form like a very basic something or other? Like print off and go visit with these folks?
Yeah. Yeah.
So you choose, it just has to be some legal literature where the easement exists at, correct?
I'll find out because I know it's going to be on the street as soon as it was. It was in that memory when I was talking about it, it was needed. So I think Martin might.
Not this year.
You're right, considerable.
So is the, is the procedure different whether the landowner is in consent or not?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, there is a different procedure.
If the landowner's consent, then you guys can just do a resolution.
Okay, so that's what we're trying to avoid.
If they're not, then there has to be a public hearing where they can come in and protest.
Can you get something to him sometime this week, maybe, Michael?
Yeah, I can do that.
Get something for him, like if he's there consenting.
Yeah, I'm in the back, he'll get you the name and whatever.
Why don't you tell my contractor? I said we want to get this.
Be two weeks.
Result?
Be two weeks. That's what.
You know, I probably told him, probably with a fine for September because I still have, there's a half a mile of that. It needs to be grabbed before it's mad. And contract trucks activity, but I don't know about a day. Jimmy, what's match?
Yeah, because there was 200 with some flaws, I'm putting that 20.
Absolutely. Well, you know, the question would be paying for trucking for the. No, we'll work it out. We've got, we've got some money in there. We'll work it out if it doesn't work out. And then we'll work it out. Okay?
Another thing, Jim. We were looking at some of those trucking reports that. And well, one of the outfits came in and apparently came around the staff something going on with their loader staff, so they weren't able to keep the tickets.
Yes.
How do you keep track of that? And if you're not getting tickets?
The loader kind of was writing it on paper.
And you got that?
She was physically writing tickets, yes.
Okay. Because one of the truck drivers brought in all the tickets on little pieces of paper. But apparently now the other driver showed up with these little pieces of paper. And, but you're able to?
She writes new ticket, she gets one to the truck driver and then she keeps one to the permit of her secretary. And she phones that to Martin and so forth.
Okay, so you know what kind of.
More compared now. I think, Jimmy, that was our biggest concern is that we didn't have a play. Well, I, I had four loads. I need to answer. So we just want to make sure that the system has the checks and balances that are appropriate. And the body hand keeps track of it too. Or somebody know about it. I just remember some, you know, people avoided the way station.
So we have an agreement still that we need to approve chairman's signature on for Redview.
We're going to make a motion to author the chairman's picture on agreeing with cattle guard installation and relocation on county road number 72.
Second. I should probably second and consider a discussion. Thanks for getting a flow of landowners.
Absolutely.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The new store. This is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy. We have a bootleggers liquor. The deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing. The coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's 30 people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their donuts. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
All right, thanks, Jim. Sorry.
Thanks, Jim.
Do you want to stay?
Yeah, if you can, if you can. You guys are up, Scott. Or you, you guy are up.
I, I, yeah. Greetings to the commission. Me here to discuss the water rent situation.
renting from yourself on a building. And, and we were also spitballing other ideas of, we were wondering if the easement at the sheriff's department would work, you know, for, for something like that. And I think that was the gist of it. Um, how do we quantify renting from ourselves, building from ourselves?
I remember this discussion too, and I believe the, probably the more exact definition of that would, would have been the utilities that were being paid by the coroner to search and rescue. I think that that was the, the better language, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Now, the, the rent was under, that was the line item that was established that was just utilized.
Exactly.
And so the question for rent comes up is exactly like what Nathan says, is why are we renting from ourselves? When in reality, it was a utilities usage through, um, their own box with search and rescue, is that right? Okay.
So that's my question, is how we can work through that? Do we just need to change the name of the line item? Because, yeah, it is, county homes are building, but they're not maintained or paid for utilities, that's search and rescue. So, uh, I don't, uh, I don't feel comfortable using their money for the coroner's office. Now, I think that would actually be a legal one, five hundred and sixty-three. They can donate to the coroner's office. So I'm just wondering, yeah, what, what's our next step? Change the name or the line?
Probably.
I don't know, I'm having, I'm having an interesting issue here because we weren't in, in the negotiations of the contract. So we don't know exactly, and I tried to get a copy of it and I wasn't able to, but anyway. So I'm not as up to speed as I wanted to be. But that's an interesting place for us to be, is that it's a county owned building. The, the agreement was that it would be upgraded and you did tell us that you were doing that. So not only are we ben, letting a benefit of a, of a county building not having rent with this understanding, but then we're supposed to then pay the utilities too?
Well, for the coroner's office.
You use five hundred dollar worth of utilities?
Well, I'm, my stuff is in there twenty-four seven, three sixty-five.
So that's rent.
Yeah. And using the utilities and, yeah, I probably use that building more than some of this.
Do you, do you see where we're coming from?
Well, I understand maybe as far as utilities, uh, are you familiar with this statute?
Look.
Yeah.
We can pull these out of our.
Hardly enough, I've read this one. Thank you.
Well, so if the county does not provide an office, then the office shall be maintained in a place approved by the board of county commissioners. So is the county going to be able to take care of SARS maintenance fees and utilities and whatnot, then, then the coroner's office could just be there. So what, what if, what if I wasn't in a county building? Would you pay rent?
We do.
We did pay rent to the kitty moles.
Right.
We pay, we pay rent to the kitty moles.
Right.
We didn't own the kitty moles.
That's right. But let's say we went in the sheriff's department in the basement. You already paid the utilities?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, see, that's not wrong. You don't pay the utilities for search and rescue, they?
Correct. But you're asking, that, the, it's not making, we're not giving and then giving again. See?
And we're also giving one percent monies.
We're giving one, yeah, we're giving one percent monies. We're giving, and now, we give a building with conditions, we understand what the conditions are. Now you want us to pay the utilities?
You know, I just figured the coroner's office needs to pay for utilities wherever it is, if the county isn't paying one. Right? I mean, shouldn't the coroner's office pay for utilities of the office they're in? I'm just asking.
That's a county owned building. That's one of our, our.
Right, those utilities are all paid for, that's, it, so search and rescue should not pay for the coroner's office utilities in space.
They aren't.
They aren't?
Yes, they are.
It's a county building.
They're paying utilities in the upkeep.
Because they're getting it free.
No, they're not getting it free.
Well, that was a secret, right?
Right.
They're not being, they're not being charged rent.
And, and with all, pardon me, with all due express, you, you told me thirty-two thousand, right, that you spent already?
Well, that was just in parts, yeah, not material.
Right? So in a four-year period, that's not bad rent.
So I guess then, is this something that we need to discuss with the executive board of search and rescue? Make sure that they're okay with the coroner using their space?
So.
Or can you tell search and rescue they don't have a choice?
Give me the reason why you need search and rescues.
I don't. That was just an offer and a pretty cheap rent.
Kitty moles was done without a place to pull the vehicle in, I think, wasn't it? I mean, your office could be the size of a pillbox, I mean.
I could.
According to his statue, but, yeah, you could do it from your house.
Until.
So you're not in here.
Yeah, until the legislation passes that you have to be a county owned building.
Yeah.
But that, that's my question. They don't have to be there.
They have to have a place though, secure for all of the coroner records, so whether those are to the attorney's office or?
Sheriff's base, one of them.
Yes.
The, the, um, the main thing I need for the records, they, uh, secure, uh, but I need twenty-four seven access, so wherever that would be. And that's, that's doable. I just want to make sure that, that we're doing the right thing here because that doesn't feel right, uh, for me to be using SARS for some reason, so to speak.
Well, and I think, I kind of feel like, uh, um, it probably should have been on the plate maybe earlier if that was the one you'd be agreeing with, search and rescue saying, okay, you know, there's going to be some utility usage of the coroner's office being here. Um, I feel like, like we might be trying to renegotiate that, maybe? And if that's, if that's the case, it needs to be brought to light of, of everybody involved. But I feel like, uh, I feel that the, the utilities side of the coroner being put under the line, the, the biggest eyebrow lift is because it was under line item rent.
Mm-hmm.
And so that is the most obvious question is, is why are we renting from ourselves? And I don't believe that that's, that's the language that gets created, although, um, might be, I think, the, the, all the utilities are in search and rescue's, um, name, they're not coming through on a broadband to the fairgrounds, say for instance, and then they're paying and that would even be more congested. So utilities are in search and rescues and you're utilizing those utilities under the blanket of search and rescue, calling it rent.
I'm not, and I'm not even sure where I saw, I'm just speaking for myself, I'm not sure that I have a problem with him paying his part of the utilities if, if an outside group is paying the utilities on a building. But how big is your space? Is his utilities five hundred dollars a night? Do you see the details? I mean, is it?
I, I pay them. I'm secretary to search and rescue.
But that's a tad bit of a.
I know.
Now we have a conflict.
So there, same. Um, so that, that's why I'm just, yeah, that's why I'm not sure that, that that's even going to work.
So I go like zip all out of fairgrounds, is it usable at all?
Open classroom.
Yeah.
It was in use a week ago.
Do something over there.
Well, I mean, there's options out there, is there a desk downstairs?
Number four?
Yeah, isn't there a desk in, in there?
It works, sounds like moving over to the sheriff's department.
I, you know, I, I think we have some discussion of, of a whole bunch of places, people that could be in that room, but that's certainly one of them. Maybe you get to be at that, I'm sorry. You, he.
Sorry.
Signing you at that.
Yeah.
That office.
By the way, like he's got a conflict, I'm just torn for you.
Oh, yeah. I'll be sending it to you, probably.
Yeah.
We're also doing it countywide, by the way.
And, and I agree, there's probably some, it needs, it needs cleaned up a little bit as far as maybe location and whatever, but I, what I don't want this conversation to get into is discrediting the work that's been put into that building because, uh, the thirty-two thousand, I saw it for myself, place looks awesome. Um, thirty-two thousand is probably hardcore purchased, um, things for that, not including hours, labors, and it looks really nice. So I hope that that doesn't, it's not discrediting what has been going on with that.
That certainly wasn't my intent.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Canow. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
Can I just give some input into this? Just something to think about it, maybe it's, I, we might be thinking in a whole different direction here. Uh, so we, we entered into that agreement with the fairgrounds to just have a, a home, you know, that we could do all that work to get along. What, what that turned into is, you know, we're, we operate totally on donated funds. So that monthly utilities just chinks us away at some point, you know, we, uh, you know, we, we have to go fundraise to pay our utilities. So this deal was quite a good benefit. It knocks out a good high percentage of that, uh, on its own, I mean, without us having to use our donated funds to pay our utilities. So I don't know if there's, you know, I, we don't necessarily need rent, we don't mind him being there, I gave up an office for it, I guess I could, that's okay. But, uh, uh, you know, that's, that's our biggest issue is that when we, you take him, take him, his money away, whether he's there or not there, you know, we will eventually, we just have to fundraise to be able to keep that building running. So that's, that's an issue that we deal with and he, he probably does, I mean, we're keeping the heated for his vehicle, we run the, we run it to keep water, sewer, electrical power, everything going for, for the office, I mean, it's, but we only have a meeting, a training session in there a month, you know, so it's not like we're in there, we're just keeping the equipment, water and inside. So, I don't know, you think about how, how that works, but that's kind of how the situation is going.
Okay, so we're looking at it, at it from a different lens.
No, I know.
So we've, we've given up a building that could be rented for events, whatever, for the fair board. The taxpayer has given up that, so that is not generating any funds in order to sustain that fairgrounds. I understand what you're paying, but wherever you would go, you would have to pay a utility of some sort, regardless of where you went, unless you chose to work in the dark and you guys are probably pretty good at that. Um, but, so I mean, I understand what your argument is, but when we ask the taxpayer again, now we have to pay again. We've taken, we've taken a source of revenue to help try to sustain that fairgrounds. And now, Mr. and Mrs. Taxpayer, I got to ask you for more to help this. Now, is this, this thing, it's wonderful to have a search and rescue, yes, we got it. So we're in a weird place here and it feels interesting to, to pay ourselves now. Um, if in the conversation, that part of our one percent would go in a different direction to help pay for utilities, I mean, we're asking the taxpayer again, every time they buy something, you're paying a little portion to, to turn on the lights in that building. But that is very, you know, very transparent in that.
What do the utilities run out there for, you know, to average, I mean, for, for the whole year, we just divide that, you know?
When our gas was up two hundred?
Well, of course, I don't vary, so I have to get the averages, but of course your water sewer is around seventy now. Um, and then gas, what kind of quarter is that, thirty? It's close to four thousand dollars, I would say.
And, and just as a reminder, did we not pay our water fix? Did we fix the water?
I don't know.
Did we not have a voucher conserved here?
I don't know, so you guys pay the water and the fairgrounds pay the water?
Not for that.
Maybe the meter on the.
They're on their own basis.
Yeah.
What were we paying for our kitty moles? A month?
I think it was three hundred, because I think I went down fifty bucks just to do this game.
I mean, I guess all the major clean up is so it's transparent, you know, we, the county just pays utilities on that building, hence, you know, that'd be a, a way to keep you guys spending your, your donation money for utilities, justify you being there, you know, if the county gets some utilities on that building. You know, that's.
So are we going to put, put up the utilities for the entire fairgrounds?
The problem is, if he's in this building, utilities are pretty well, I mean, it'd be a minuscule amount of actually utility.
Yeah.
For him, but we, he goes out and gets his own building, then the cost is there, so it's going to be there with search and rescue too, even though it's our building. Um, I don't know. One thing I'm not real comfortable with, and I'm going to tell you right now, is what you said a little bit earlier about being the treasurer and, and that building and bringing funds in there.
So, um, I hope everybody understands, I'm not here trying to cause trouble, I'm trying to keep trouble from happening. So that's why I'm asking, is this something that we just need to go, the coroner's office needs to be in a different building? To clean it up, if we have to do it that way. To clean it up, if we have to do it that way.
I would almost personally say if you're gonna continue the role of search and rescue, that might be the best option.
Or I could resign.
So then, you're not having to.
You're sitting back in front of them.
Yeah, I feel.
Is there non, is there non-voting members of like search and rescue? I guess you guys have like a, like a voting board of some sort?
We have, we have a executive board that's just the five members for executive decisions, kind of just, and then the voting membership is about twenty members, and then we have reserve members besides that that don't vote.
Mr. Chairman, it just looks messy to me.
Can you give us a couple weeks to sit on it and think about options?
Yeah, for me, and Becky knows this, because we, we chatted back and forth a little bit. Because I asked about the budget line not being there. So, uh, I started moving out, because if I'm not paying rent, then I need to get out. And I was encouraged not to do that for a little bit. So, um, you know, I, we can do that. I can take everything, I can take everything to my office. But eventually, if they pass legislation, which they're trying to, it will be, we have to have it in a secure county-owned building. It's not that way at the moment, but they're trying to get it through this hall. Which is, it's a good idea. I think that's a really good idea. Instead of legal records like that being scattered all over, you know, never mind that. But we do have a little bit better hold on that. But, uh, otherwise, that's, that's what I would do, until it gets figured out.
Legislation probably wouldn't go in the front, that's a fine first.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
I like the idea of you being out there somewhere, I think it's a nice fit apparently.
Yeah, it was good for both parties, maybe that's wrong.
I was trying to rock on our stuff, and that's why I have to pay the money. And maybe we can think of some ideas. Maybe don't, don't wholesale everything out of there just yet.
You know, whatever the thing is, I think we have to make sure search and rescue's good.
No, I get it.
You know, make sure that, that's working out.
Um, in some ways, it's, it'd be more fair to the public that not only were we giving four thousand dollars in one percent money, we're, we're giving an additional six thousand dollars, we're giving ten thousand dollars in some, some form of a donation to search and rescue of the status quo.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if, if the one percent wants to change that way, and it becomes a provider of service, then we do it that way. But that's kind of how you.
Just a couple weeks, come back at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Nothing, can you make up then?
We'll try and make it work.
I see your P O boxes there. Those go there occasionally.
Every now and then. So the meeting is there in two weeks?
Yeah, at the city hall.
Duck necks.
Last night, she had, I think it was cake or something, German chocolate.
I get all excited about ribbons.
We're not getting those.
I know, it's up for next meeting.
You could set it up though.
Why not?
Oh, then? Oh, yeah, I thought I signed up the cake.
But that one would be, if you did, this ribbit was a lot of water.
You did, you said that. No complaints over here.
No, then, German chocolate brown is awesome.
Oh, yeah, German chocolate brown.
Those were great. The donuts are great too.
I think we need you, because if I, I come out, maybe there is, maybe there's a little problem here that we can run and get rid. And I don't, I don't like rent.
Alright, nice stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Alright, before you end up.
Yes, some of the wording there, maybe look at it, like, where the, we've asked Jimmy to do a ton of work this spring, with all these, on the roads and stuff. He had vacation time that had to be used by, till I first relisted. There, I would feel comfortable, we had some kind of wording in there that, that vacation be carried over on a case-by-case basis or something with the approval board, you know. We threw a lot on his plate this spring, and he had vacation to use, or use or lose it.